This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of all open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, you can dial 1-408-650-3123 using the access code 235235861. Or the public can join on the Internet via computer at www.global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. And with that, we have everybody here in person, so we're all set there. And do we have a motion for executive session?
Do we make the motion first or do we do the pledge?
We're doing the pledge after we read it.
Okay, cool. I'll make a motion to move to executive session.
All right, so then I declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body relative to strategy with respect to the collective bargaining, and that the board will come out of executive session and reconvene in open session. Do we have a second on that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I think this motion has to be read as stated.
Okay, I'm sorry, could you restate that motion painful?
I will make the motion to go into executive session in accordance with NGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to deliberate upon matters which if done in an open meeting could be detrimental, generically affecting the position of the town regarding strategy with respect to the collective bargaining unit, to come out of executive session and reconvene in open meeting.
Any further discussion? No? Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
And the chairs, yes. And just for, to keep things in order, I then declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body relative to strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and that the board will come out of executive session and reconvene in open session after. And we're going to reconvene this meeting. This meeting, this open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, you can dial 1-408-650-3123 and using access code 235235861. The public can also join via computer at www.global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. And with that, we'll rise for the pledge of allegiance. We have no public comments this evening. So with that, we'll move right on to the public hearings and presentations. We have a petition by National Grid in Verizon, New England for a pole location on Prospect Street. And do we have presenter here? I don't see anyone on the line.
Hi, yes, this is Rob Green with National Grid. Can you hear me all right?
We can, Mr. Green. Thank you.
Thank you. So like I said, I'm with National Grid representing the company. I'm with the distribution engineering team, and I'm the one who was out there. This is my project to service 54 Prospect Street. So the location of the pole, as you guys see in the petition application, that is perhaps in front of you.
Yes, if I could, Mr. Green, I often forget on public meetings I need to open it first. My apologies. Do we have a motion to open it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
My apologies, you can proceed.
Sure, not a problem. So like I said, this pole location and proposed installation is to serve a new home across the street from that location. As evidenced in the petition sketch that may be in front of you guys, 54 Prospect Street is more or less, it's a new home and they need to be serviced power. And they also will have a pole on their property since their house is pretty far set back. So that is really, in short, the reason for the installation.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions from the board members?
Why can't that be achieved from either Pole 47 or Pole 42?
Sure, so to answer that question, is one of the things that I looked at a little bit throughout my afternoon just in preparation for the meeting. This is also something that was explored on the initial site meeting with the customer and their builder. The problem that we kept running into was really just, it was easement rights. From either Pole 47, it was aerial trespassing over 52 Prospect Street, the corner, the front corner of their property. And likewise, from Pole 42 is the front corner of 100 Prospect Street. And from what I was informed by that customer at 54 Prospect Street, they couldn't acquire either rights from either of those property owners. So the unfortunate reality was the next best thing was an install of pole on the east side of Prospect Street.
Was there any consideration to underground utilities?
For an underground from one of the two existing poles, am I understanding the question correctly?
Yes. Yes, from one of the two existing poles, could you go down there and hit 52 Prospect Street?
We would then have to trench underground underneath the road for crime, like increase the cost of commercials as part of our tariff, thing that we have to look at for lead cost to serve. And so that's, it was something that was briefly thought about, but it ended up not being a proper prospect.
Any further questions? No? Do we have any questions, comments from the public? Seeing none, do we have any questions from town administration? Nope. Nope. Okay. With that, do we have a motion?
Motion to close.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And do we have a motion on the application?
Motion to approve the petition as outlined in their petition.
Okay.
A second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Board of Selectmen. I hope you have a great evening. Thank you for your time.
You as well. Thank you. All right, and moving on, we have the presentation of the fiscal year 2022 audit.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite up Tom Scanlon. I'd like to make a few comments before Tom gives you a recap of the audit. That being said, I want to thank the entire Scanlon audit team for their professionalism and patience during the course of the field audit. It was done at a time when, quite honestly, we were without a town accountant, a CFO, and it made, it made the field audit somewhat difficult. But I want to thank Tom for his patience during that time. And I also want to take this opportunity to thank Jill, Lori Ann, Pat, and Karen came on at the end of the month towards the tail end of the audit. Thank you for helping out. I truly appreciate that. Some of the highlights I want to identify, and I'm sure Tom's going to hit on maybe some of the same items.
As I reviewed the audit, it's clear once again that we're in good financial standing. Our general fund balance is about 37% of general fund operating revenue, which is fantastic. Our general fund free cash, we had a net gain of 1.4 million from the prior fiscal year. When we look at our enterprise funds, Packard Chalk had a net gain of $136,000, which is excellent. Although our sewer free cash, we had an erosion of about $260,000. So we're seeing a lag in the receivables on the sewer side. I think that may be an inflection of a difficult economy. We're going to continue to watch that. The town continues to address all of our long-term pension and OPEB liabilities. Our self-insured trust as of June 30th was a robust $11 million, which is fantastic, allowing us some flexibility when setting rates in the upcoming years. So that's a good thing to our employees as well as the employer. And it also may allow us to consider a premium holiday or two where you shut off the deduction and give something back to the employees. We continue to build our excess levy. It's currently at 8.3 million in the current fiscal year. And also, it underscores the fact that we're not taxing the full allowable 2.5. We continue to conservatively budget our revenues, which leads to positive fund equity and further strengthens our financial stability. So with that, some of the key items I gleaned from the audit, but I'll turn it over to Tom, and Tom can walk you through his assessment of the audit.
On my points here. From our perspective, the audit went really well, like it usually does. We had no disagreements with management, gave no material adjustments to the financial statements. The Town of Auburn's financial reporting is rock solid. What I mean by that is the reports you're getting passed out on a quarterly basis, monthly basis, and looking at them, the numbers there are solid. I've walked through what we do, what exactly a financial audit is. It's not a forensic audit. I know it's a buzzword out there right now. It's not. We're applying on your financial statements. So we're assessing risk on your financial statements when designing our audit procedures. And in accordance with that, we have to consider fraud when we're signing our financial statements, but it's not our sole purpose, which would be a forensic audit. I don't think there's any need for a forensic audit when you're saying that, but there's a big difference, I know. There's an expectation gap between clients, what's being out there in the field right now. But I just wanted to clear what we do as we go through. On your financial statements, pages three, four, and five, that is your audit opinion. That is what your bond rating agencies are looking at. That was your grant, grant awarding agencies are looking at. And it's the best opinion you can get. We didn't modify the opinion, so, which is always good. Financial statements are very unique to a government. You actually have two sets of balance sheets compared to a company, and you have two P and Ls, which I know can be very unique. And on pages 18 and 19, obviously I forgot my reader, so I kind of get old stinks. You can't see stuff. These are entity-wide statements. These take into effect, I call them financial statements for accountants. Basically, the only ones I really understand these. As you can see, there's, on your asset side, you have fixed assets, which is not part of your budget. You don't budget depreciation. But what sits on these financial statements is OPEB and your net pension liability, which I know we've talked about for years. So when you look at these and you look at governmental activities, the column under net position, you'll see unrestricted a negative, negative 44 million, which you usually don't want your net position in a negative if you're from a company standpoint of view. But as we look up, and what's the two drivers of that is your OPEB liability, which is 59 million, and your net pension liability of 42 million. So that's what's driving that negative. You're addressing both from the pension side. You're on a funding schedule. You're paying into Worcester County, which I think 2037, I think, is to be fully funded. And on the OPEB side, I fully don't believe your liability is $60 million, but it's not zero either. There's a lot of assumptions that go into that. You have a solid OPEB trust fund, which you fund 500,000 here, I think funded in 2022. At June 30th, 2022, you had 6.8 million in the fund. OPEB is very long-term thinking, not current thinking. At some point, you're going to dip into that trust. Not too sure me and Eddie will be here, but at some point you will dive into that. And it's really forward-thinking and not really trying to address the 59 million right now. And I think you're doing everything in your power to do that personnel-wise, benefit side, and also on the trust side. I don't know if any questions, like instead of financial statements, I know they're, the big key points out of those two things, which I think you're funding. And then on pages 20 and 21, these are your more traditional financial statements. They do not account for the long-term liabilities, like long-term debt, capital assets, OPEB and pension. And they really can't kind of give you a current resource look. And as you look under the general fund unassigned is 24.4 million. That is fantastic.
A benchmark that bonding agencies and other agencies use out there is if you're between 10 and 15%, you're solid. And as Eddie pointed out here, 35% of your expenditures and 30% of your revenues. And that comes from years of your financial policies are working. And I would encourage you to stay with those financial policies because they're reflective on your financial statements. And it's always good to see your financial statements reflect to what terms you're using out there to set your budgets. And the 24 million should be representative of your free cash, which was 18.7 million, plus your stabilization funds, which was just under 4 million. And there's a couple of gap receivables that come to the 24. But you can walk from your financial statements to that number. And then probably the most important financial statement is on page 24, that's your budget versus actual. This is how you generate your free cash throughout the year. So in the column all the way out to the right is probably the most important column. That shows how you compare to what your budget did on the revenue side, about a million dollars over what you budgeted for revenue. And on the expenditure side, about 1.2 million. So you have a nice blend of how you're generating your free cash, like I did point it out. So you generated in this current year budget about 2.2 million in free cash, which is pretty good. And say your free cash is 18 million, I can't say enough about your financial practices that you have out there. One other thing I just wanted to point out, there's a, you and everyone else in the Commonwealth has a significant grant that got funded in 2022, which is ARPA. I think that's a very important grant of how you're going to use it going forward. Yeah, I think you only spend about $194,000 in fiscal year 22. I think your total was about $5 million. And you did take the revenue loss, which is great. I'm happy you did that, I think, from financial reporting perspectives. But it's really important how you're using that going forward is going to solicit by the future of the town. The way your financial policies are, if you approach that grant the same way you're approaching your free cash and your stabilization, I don't think you'll have a problem. And that's kind of it on the financial side. And like I said, Auburn for the past decade has had, can't say enough budget financial reporting. From an audit standpoint of view, it's a pleasure working with the town. We, there's four or five people that come out for a week. What we've been doing over the past year and a half, two years, used to come out for a week and a half onsite. But now we're starting to learn to do a blended remote audit onsite and then to remote, we're finding out. Yeah, we don't have to go out there and audit special revenue. We can sit in our office. So actually picking up time, being more efficient, I guess that's the byproduct of COVID that happened. But as a firm, one of the areas we kind of, we really focus on is at the cash reconciliation level and the counter receivable level. Those are your two biggest assets in your revenue stream. So we're really focused on those areas as far as your controls are working and you're balancing those two areas because those are your two biggest assets. So as a firm, we're spending a lot of time at the bank statement level. Like if you're bank statement outstanding checks, we're making sure it backs up to a list. So it's a firm that's, we're kind of into that detail on the financial audit. So that's kind of all I have. Any questions? It was a pleasure being here, not like I'd, being in person more than being on the E-bolt, kind of.
No, we're all set. Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any questions throughout the year and pop up, tell us data, contact us. Have a good one.
We have new communications. We have select board dinner items. We have a outdoor entertainment license and open air license on town property. That's Faith Baptist Church for their Easter, Easter for 508. Their annual Easter egg hunt, which will be held Saturday, April 1st, 8:00 a.m. until 5:00 at Lemansky Park. And I believe we do have somebody here on behalf of Faith Baptist. How are you? You can come, you can have a seat up here. You can just give your name to the record.
Yeah, Alyssa Magliani.
All right, and do you have anything to present, or do you just, we may have some questions from the board members?
Yeah, I was told that you had the proposal and it's.
We do, yes. Yep, yep.
Other than that, just aiming to bring a fun community event.
No questions from the board members? And so do we have a motion? We'll make a motion that we grant the license for the Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 1st, 2023, from 8:00 to 5:00, with a rain date of the following.
If you don't have a rain date, we're going to do it inside if the weather's terrible. We'll just bring everyone back to the church.
All second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a vote. All set. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I have a motion.
Oh, yes, my apologies. Good call. You have a motion?
Can I make a motion?
Oh, yes, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote, so those fees are waived.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. All right, next we have an open air license on town property, the Auburn Public Library, 369 Southwood Street in Auburn for book sales on April 29th, 2023, May 20th, 2023, June 24th, 2023, July 15th, 2023, and also September 9th, 2023. This application is from the Friends of the Auburn Public Library. I believe I see library here. Is that a presenter?
So this is Jean Collins, Director of the Library. Linda Daddis, who's the President of the Friends, is not able to be there. And I'm actually still at the library, so I just called in. I attend all the Friends meetings and I approve these dates. They don't conflict with anything. And then I signed off on the form for this to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. So everything is okay with me.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you, Jean. Are there any questions from the board members?
I just have a request going forward. We always have an email from the Director. I don't know whose initials are on that. And I know, obviously, the staff pays close attention, but it would just be cleaner to have an email from Jean saying it's approved.
Okay. Did you hear that, Jean?
I couldn't hear it very well. I heard something about an email. So sorry, could you repeat that?
Yes, through, Mr. Chairman, you can. Sure. Mr. Carpenter had just requested that, moving forward in the future, if you could just send an email to the Board, to the Board of Selectmen, just saying that you've reviewed everything and that it meets your approval as well. He values your opinion and would just like to see that check mark, basically.
Okay, in addition to the form, because I signed off on the form, but I'm happy to send it.
In place of the form. In place of the form, yeah. He saw initials on it. He couldn't make the initials out. The emails are just cleared. I just don't want to have misunderstanding in case somebody, you know, might want to do the wrong thing, which I know the people involved right now wouldn't, but you never know, so.
Sure, I'm happy to do.
Thank you. With that, I'll make a motion that we grant the petition as outlined in the application for the dates involved with the standard conditions that we apply. We have a motion. We have a second. Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All in the favor? It is a vote. And do we have any further motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to waive the fee for the open air license.
Second. Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. All set, Jean. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to Fender L M C, we have the May 2nd, 2023, the annual town meeting warrant. So we would vote to approve subject to final review by town council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're not asking you to take a position on the warrant. We're just asking you to approve it as it's written here, its format, knowing that legal counsel may suggest some changes. I can tell you there's going to be a change to Article 16 where we have to insert some language for opioid settlement that dedicates any revenues we receive to the stabilization account. So there may be some minor tweaks and certainly some of the appropriations will need to be filled in. We won't know some of those amounts till we get closer to town meeting, but certainly as those become available, we will let you know.
Any questions? And with that, do we have a motion? I'll make a motion that we approve the town warrant for format subject to final review by town council.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. We have no gift acceptances, no propretations, direct recognitions. All right, so on to eight number, we have town manager items. We have the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, CMRPC, district location technical assistance grants.
So, Mr. Chairman, I respectfully request that we hold this item until the next meeting. I was hoping to have a value for that grant by Friday of last week. And even up through today, that has not come from Central Mass yet. So I'm asking that we hold this item until the next meeting. Although, to my understanding, there's no match on behalf of the town site in terms of dollar value. There may be some administrative in kind. But certainly, the board would need to know those details before it considers approval session.
Do we have a motion to continue the matter to the next public meeting? I'll move.
Okay.
All in the favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. And moving on, we have the development agreement update for the Perry Place projects.
Through the chair, we had a recent conversation with town council. We ironed out a few of the, a few of the items contained in that draft. There's been some consultation between the town attorney and the developer's attorney relative to some of that language. So we fully expect, hope to expect to bring something into the board at your meeting on the 10th.
Excellent. Any questions from the board members? And we have the notice on Auburn Cable TV, the license renewal hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to let the board know that we've advertised for the first time. The ad ran informing the public that there will be a public hearing on April 10th. There is an opportunity for individuals to review the terms of the renewal agreement in the town clerk's office. I also asked that be posted on our website so people can review that remotely if they so choose. A second ad will be running in the paper in accordance with the terms of the license renewal agreement. That ad is running, has to run bef.
It will be, should be Wednesday.
It should be this Wednesday. And that will lead to a public hearing on the 10th where Attorney Bill August, who's representing the town, will be available for any questions or comments that the public may have.
Okay. When will this be available? Is it right here?
It currently is available in the clerk's office. I believe it probably now is available. I'm seeing if I, it's probably on the website as we speak right now as well. If not, it should be up tomorrow.
Are we inviting members of the committee that worked on it to be here in case there are any questions?
Yes, they will be here on the 10th as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And moving on to the update on Kim Gleason.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask that the board take up item 8F? Two chiefs are here, so if we can do that first.
Do we have a motion on the matter?
So. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving up to communication on public safety cost estimates. It's the potential vote to schedule a joint meeting of the school committee, finance committee, and the select board.
Through the chair, I, we wanted to let the Board of Selectmen know that we received a revised cost estimate for the public, joint public safety facility. That cost came in Thursday. That cost came in Thursday, Steve, I believe. Uh, we wanted to get it to the board as soon as we received it, uh, cuz I think this is gonna drive, a process that needs to be discussed. So the cost estimate, uh, based upon the facility out on West Street, uh, that was recommended and presented by the Facilities Reuse Committee, of the Public Safety Facilities Committee, uh, comes with a price tag of seventy-eight million, three hundred eighty-eight thousand. That's been provided in your packet. As a result of that, I think we've identified, um, some additional costs that may not be incorporated into this, such as any modifications that may be required for school admin to occupy a current police station, a configuration, uh, reconfiguration cost as well as temporary accommodations for a period of time while the bu- building is being built, if that is the will of the voters, that will require some temporary office space and, and accommodations for school administration. I would suggest, um, that moving forward, we have a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, as well as a school committee in discussing this project and what impacts it may, uh, present as a result of, of this, uh, estimate. I can tell you we had, um, some debt schedules prepared. We had many prepared. But just to give you an idea of what the cost is gonna be, cuz certainly seventy-eight million is a lot higher than the forty-six million that came in, uh, initially. A twenty-year level debt schedule based upon a seventy-eight million dollar borrowing for the average home of three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars for a twenty-year purpose is about seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. That's at an interest rate, a blended-ish interest rate of four point seven five to five percent. On a thirty-year debt schedule, um, that cost would be six hundred and twenty-five dollars over a thirty-year period. That just gives you an idea of, 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 of cost to the, to the average median house at three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Certainly, higher value, higher cost, low value, low cost. I'm gonna ask if, if both chiefs have any comments. I don't know if they do or not, but certainly we wanted to at least begin a discussion, map out a strategy, uh, in terms of where we're going cuz ultimately the Board of Selectmen are the only ones that can send it to the voters. But that's a big number, and I think we need to begin some discussions on, on where we're going, how we're gonna approach this, if there's an appetite for it at all.
I can just ask a question, Mr. Chairman. I know that there isn't a building bureau as yet to get funds, but is there any thought to asking our delegation for funds or to sponsor an article to try and handle some of these expenses?
There is something being considered at the state level. I'll let Steve get into it because I believe he testified.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, so to answer your question, uh, Mr. Carpenter, there is currently, uh, legislation that was filed this year, um, that is pending. At this point, it is getting favorable reviews on both sides in the House and the Senate. Essentially, they are looking to create a building commission very similar to MSBA, uh, where they would fund fifty percent of municipal projects for public safety buildings. Um, I have testified twice before the Senate on that bill. And like I said, it, it is, at least in the early stages, as the legislation was just filed, um, for this session, it is getting favorable reviews. Also, I just saw today, uh, that federal legislation, uh, Representative Reed out of Rhode Island has some bipartisan, uh, legislation on the federal side, on a bill that they're calling, um, I believe it's the, the Fire Act, I believe. And they're trying to appropriate seven hundred and fifty million of federal money that would go towards renovations and construction of fire stations. Unfortunately, in my reading of that federal bill, it looks like it would not cover joint, uh, public safety facilities for police and fire. Uh, there was no mention of that without reading the legislation. I, I don't know, but it wasn't mentioned in the article. But that legislation was filed today. So it appears that on the, on the state and federal side, uh, that there seems to be, uh, some movement in that direction. You know, we, we're gonna be discussing this. We're ready, uh, you know, to post some information tomorrow. We obviously wanted the board to see it first, and we're gonna be posting some information tomorrow on, on social media, outlining in a little more detail these numbers. You know, I think we'd, we're all remiss if we didn't say that, you know, we're a little disappointed that the number, you know, came in that high. As the town manager mentioned, uh, what did you throw? It was a number forty-eight? Is that what you threw out two years ago?
Forty-six?
Forty-six million dollars two years ago. Construction costs have escalated by thirty-five percent in two years. It's averaged fifteen to seventeen percent a year over the last two years. You know, two years ago, with our double A plus bond rating, we were borrowing money under two percent. And now we're looking at a blended interest rate of four point seven five to five percent. It's not good news, and, you know, we know that. And I, I don't think anybody could have predicted two years ago, um, you know, that we would have seen roughly, you know, a thirty million dollar increase on this project. But the reality is, is that although the professional estimators and the architects, they don't project that construction rates are gonna continue to escalate at fifteen to seventeen percent moving forward. But if you look at construction over the past thirty years, that escalation has been roughly five to six percent a year escalation in construction. Although they don't anticipate that that's going to be fifteen to seventeen percent moving forward, they also don't estimate that we're ever gonna see that five to six again. So we're probably gonna be somewhere in that seven to ten range. So although this is a big number, we know it's a big number. We know that this is a big decision for the community. But, you know, in our messaging, one of the things that we at least just want the public to know and consider is that this, this project isn't gonna get any cheaper. So this is going to be the least amount of money that we would be able to construct this project as proposed. Obviously, if there were modifications to the project, you, you could drive cost. But as proposed, um, this is the cheapest that you're ever going to spend on, on this project. You know, the other hope, and this is something that the town manager, you know, and, uh, a group internally have talked about, the only other hope that we have that we could sort of drive the cost down on this project is in the event that interest rates are lowered between now and the time that we go out and do borrowing. That's a possibility, although we were just talking about it today. It looks like the Fed just raised the interest rate by a quarter of a percent again. But in the event that the interest rate doesn't come down by the time of borrowing, typically what we would do in our bonds is we would put in what's called a callable provision, which in years eight through ten of that borrow, we would be able to look at the interest rate. And if for some reason interest rates were lower than what we had, we could refinance, very similar to what we did with the high school at the time when we, when we bought the, uh, built the middle school. But in the event that, you know, in eight years or ten years, the interest rates are higher, well, you know, we're locked in at a, at a four point seven five, um, but that callable provision is, is there. So although the, the number is scary and, and it's, it's much higher than the estimated, you know, two hundred and twenty to two hundred and fifty dollars that we were anticipating this to be almost three years ago, the need for the project has not changed. The need is there today. It has been. The need will continue to be there. I've had conversations with many residents and, you know, we've had the conversation about, well, you know, what if we just kick the can down the road and see if construction costs are gonna get cheaper? They won't. Can, can, you know, if you look at thirty years' worth of construction data, although it's not fifteen to seventeen percent, construction costs have not gone down in thirty years. They're not gonna go down today. So we would hate to see the community pay twenty to thirty million dollars more for the same project that we're proposing today, because we're waiting to see what's gonna happen. You know, for those that were around at that time and remember, it's sort of the same thing we did in high school. You know, we, we kicked that can down the road for so long that, you know, it, it wound up costing us much more than it would have if we had done it a few decades before. So, again, big decisions, there's a lot to talk about between this board and the school committee and the finance committee. There's a lot to talk about. And, you know, the reality is, is arguments could be made on both sides as to whether or not now is, is the right time. But, you know, the message that, that Chief Lemon and I are, are just, you know, continually pushing is that, again, we understand it's a big number, but the need has been there. The need is not going away. And this is the cheapest that we will ever be able to construct this project for moving forward. So we do have some big decisions to make, but, um, we'd be happy to take any questions if the board has any additional. Thank you.
Follow-up question, just because I was running for office when the schools were being proposed. Not a fun time, um, to be running for office. But, uh, the school building assistance bureau has kind of strict rules. They go through and say, you need this, you don't need this. Is that in the bill currently before the legislature for them to review it? And what kind of delays do you anticipate? If the answer is yes, that could impact the project.
Yeah, the way that I, it does not appear that this bill is structured the same way as the MSBA where there are as many restrictions. And one example of that would be, uh, in an MSBA project, you're not doing, you're not allowed to include administrative space in an MSBA project. That does not appear to be in there. You know, they're not asking you to build a construction, you know, construct a public safety building or a fire station and not have an administrative wing or, or something like that. So there does not appear to be, Mr. Carpenter, um, as many restrictions as MSBA. But again, until the, until the revisions and things come out, we'll have to see what's done. But, um, on the surface, it doesn't appear that it is.
Do you anticipate any delays? Is there a review that they're gonna do of this proposal?
Well, it's, it hasn't, uh, it's before, um, the Senate right now. It has not gone to a vote. It has been in committee. It had a favorable review of the Public Safety Committee. I would have to check with Senator Moore to see when he's expecting that it would, uh, come to a vote. But out of, uh, you know, the hundreds of pieces of legislation, uh, that have been filed this year, this seems to be a very talked-about bill, uh, at the State House. It's receiving a lot of, uh, attention, uh, even from the news media. NBC Boston is currently doing an investigative report across the state on the conditions of, uh, public safety buildings and in some respects, some of the deplorable conditions that the buildings are in. So it's getting a lot of media attention as well. So, um, again, you can never predict what the State House is gonna do, but, you know, looking sort of at the history of, of these types of bills, I think this one probably has a pretty good shot, um, this year, probably more than others.
Will they be reviewing the program like they do on the school side?
They do. I believe that they will be reviewing the program. Again, these kind of buildings, you know, these types of buildings, um, I don't wanna say they're, they're, boy, they're, they're specialized buildings, but, you know, when you break them down, you're talking about, you know, base space for trucks. You're talking about administrative space. You're talking about storage space. They're a little less complex in terms of all of the other things that could be going on in a school building. So I think, you know, in conversations with the previous superintendent, I think a lot of the restrictions that came around the MSBA was to make sure that they weren't tucking other kinds of projects, you know, in, out, that was outside of education. I know that there, I know that a formal review process of the project is part of this bill. But when they're looking to implement funding or how quickly, I, I don't know.
That's, that's my concern as to when something will be eligible, what delays are gonna be because this figure is of today. If you get a six-month or nine-month delay on top of a vote and all that goes into that, what's that gonna be for this figure?
So one of the, one of the things that I'm still following up on, and I don't have a, I don't have a straight answer on, but one of the questions that I've posed is, let's say that the town, let's say we were successful at a ballot vote and they appropriated the funds to construct this building without any outside state aid. And then the legislation was passed, the program was up and running. In the conversations that I've had with some of the legislatures and our, um, aides within the Fire Chiefs Association who have been very instrumental in, in helping craft the bill, it doesn't look like there's anything precluding a community for applying for a project that has already been funded. Sort, sort of to almost go back because nothing's changed. The goal of the program is to reduce the tax burden on the, on the residents. So even if a project was approved, it doesn't appear that there's anything that would prohibit us from applying, receiving a grant, and then we're just not taxing to what was originally planned. And in fact, you know, I was having this conversation today. There may be some benefit to that because someone asked me, well, maybe we wait to see what the state's gonna do. You gotta remember when you go back to MSBA, the projects that they're giving money to fairly quickly are those that are shovel-ready. So really, the best way to put ourselves in a position of a shovel-ready project is to keep the timeline in order to move towards that goal. So in some respects, I think you're almost in a better position to turn around, apply for a grant and say, the taxpayers supported this initiative, but if we're able to get this grant, we're gonna be able to reduce taxes by X amount. And by the way, because we've kept our timeline, our project is shovel-ready. I think in some respects, those have, the shovel-ready projects certainly get moved to the top. At least that's what happened with MSBA.
Is there anything that precludes us if this goes to town vote and it gets rejected from putting it on the next time? Assuming we get different financing or some program. I just don't wanna have something like this come to vote and then we're precluded from.
I don't believe you are, but I'm invested with the expert. We can bring it as many times as.
You can bring it as many times?
Well, remember, I think if you bring a vote to the voters, the initial vote would not reflect any reimbursement under this program if it's not in existence. So that, it would have to be written that the, the one hundred percent of the debt would be paid for through the debt exclusion. And an often, in, in town meeting has to authorize the borrowing, so there's a two-step process here. And certainly, they may be able to put language in, in a town meeting vote, but I don't know. Certainly, it all depends on the final enactment of whatever is being considered. It's gonna contain, contain language that will allow us to do certain things. We just don't know what that is yet. What I do wanna highlight, though, is this cost estimate does provide for an escalation in construction cost through March of twenty twenty-five. So there is some recognition of increased cost that's built into this. But if there's a delay beyond that, this, certainly this number's gonna change.
We would have to borrow, town meeting would have to approve the entire sum of money, whatever the amount, correct? Do we get reimbursed for the cost of the bond council and all that other stuff? Or is that something the town has to, that, so the town, so actually the value is a little higher cuz there's, there's costs to that?
Okay.
Through the chairs, do I know that the high school debt exclusion is almost paid off? What was the average cost to the, what was the cost to the average household for the high school?
So I can tell you that the cost for the high school, which is a level debt service, and we refinanced that in year eight, we saved the taxpayers over three million dollars by refinancing. That level of debt, one point two million falls off in twenty twenty-four. That'll be our last payment. I wanna say, my recollection is, it was about, we borrowed nineteen million dollars. So nineteen versus seventy-eight, that's a pretty big difference. I wanna say we paid initially sixty-some-odd cents per thousand, but that was at a higher rate of interest before we refinanced, so.
When it was first presented, it was a quarter per thousand. I remember Mr. Kassenovich coming to town meeting and saying it was a quarter per thousand.
And just a follow-up through the chair, as the town manager mentioned, the, the debt, uh, proposal that we received, it takes into consideration that the high school debt drops off in twenty-four, which helps condense this number. Otherwise, if we didn't show the high school dropping off that number- Otherwise, if we didn't show the high school dropping off, that number would be probably a couple of hundred dollars more than it is. So it does take into consideration the high school dropping in FY twenty four.
So we wanna schedule a joint meeting, do we have an agenda or what are we trying to achieve with the joint meeting? Is it just to be in one room and have discussion or are there certain goals of the, what you guys would like to?
Well, quite honestly, I I would think that this board would wanna know, I I would get some information from the finance committee as well as the school committee on some of their concerns, just as though um, we're equally as concerned. But remember, the only ones that can send it to the voters is by a vote of of this board of selectmen. So I think you would, I would think you would wanna hear all of the issues that may be of some concern to to the finance committee as well as the school committee in making your decision whether to send it to the voters or not.
The finance committee, in my estimation, will give us a lot of their insight in terms of the overall budget and how these things, and certain of the school committee. We're, we're asking the school administration to move probably for a period of four, three to four years is my guess into temporary housing. I'm sure they're gonna have something to say about that, so I think we wanna hear from all sides to really get that input, so we can make a better decision.
If I may, I think a project of this magnitude, we've always taken to the joint committees. I think we had, when we did the middle school, we had a joint meeting of of those committees. I would put this project in the same category, I think it's worth a joint meeting. And I'd be happy to reach out if the board should ask me to, to try to coordinate a meeting in the, in the coming weeks. And I think at that point, we would have Tecton come in and give a full blown presentation based upon this cost estimate uh, as part of that meeting.
Can we notify town meeting members when that meeting is set up and just invite them to come as well? And just in general, notify through whatever channels to the public, so that if they can't attend in person, they can at least. I think one of the best thing is you've recorded a lot of the things that are available on YouTube for people who may not have been able to get to the inspections of the buildings, they're available on YouTube. So you don't, you can literally see the conditions and obviously you both have made yourselves available. So, you know, it would be a great thing if people would, if they haven't been able to see it, to view those on YouTube and uh, send questions to the chiefs and share their concerns as well. And obviously, the town manager and I would if they, if they'd like. But I think there is a lot of information out there that can help voters as they grapple with deciding on this, so. And I think that's a great, you know, resource that some towns may not have had the thought do, so.
I think this would warrant its own town meeting, I think this would warrant its own special election. A project of this magnitude should, should draw some attention and focus for this year. Any further questions?
I would just make a motion that we schedule a meeting with the relevant boards so that we uh, through the town manager's office, notify, invite town meeting members and the public to attend whatever date and time and obviously what the remote settings will be for them to be able to watch it at home and uh, you know, give the numbers. I mean, I know they're on the website, but, and direct them to those YouTube videos 'cause I think people will be very surprised by, by that and informed as well.
Any further discussion on the matter? All is in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Have a good evening. Would uh, would you guys like to see on the agenda, or sorry, on a future meeting, if assuming it's not gonna be my, the April tenth, do you wanna have discussion about what that agenda will look like for the joint meeting?
I I would even say we should probably have a special meeting for it, Mr. Chairman, that would be my preference just because I think that it would make sense to do that on an off night. Exactly. I'm away at the end of the, of April for about eight days, so.
So do we have to set a date or can we have a preferred, preferred date and we can poll to see who's available? And I would like to make sure the other committee members, relevant members are available, at least a quorum.
They wouldn't be participating in that meeting, we'd just be looking to set the agenda.
Oh, okay, alright, sorry, well.
Just so we have more focused discussion when we get to that joint meeting. Keep it in mind, shoot emails and, you know, independently, and we'll, we'll keep this on for next meeting, just to discuss.
Yeah, I'd like to reach out to the finance command, I know the chair is here tonight. We have a meeting on Wednesday, it'd be, it'd be an opportunity to give them an update that uh, there is a, a push for a joint meeting. I I know the finance committee is meeting weekly, um, I don't know, you know, I don't know if you wanna try to do it on an off week, on a Monday night. I gotta keep in mind the schedules of the school committee and, and the finance committee as well.
Budget season?
Yeah, well, would it make sense to do it on a Saturday? Having gone through many minutes, the board of selectmen used to meet on Saturdays almost all the time. I couldn't believe it, I'm like, really, wow?
I'm not opposed to a Saturday meeting, I just don't know the availability of other.
Well, just leave it open, it might, we might get more people to come if it's on a Saturday, you know, because they don't have to maneuver work, they, you know, things like that, so just throwing it out there.
Oh, my apologies, yeah, update on Camp Gleason. So I, I, I um, I put together a, just a summary of of what has happened at the senior center. So the original water pipe break took place on February fourth. We're now fifty one days into uh, uh, we're doing Camp Gleason as COA.
Oh, sorry, Camp Gleason.
Oh, I'm sorry. So Camp Gleason, just an update, so while the, the building has been um, a number of things have been done to the building. And right now, uh, they, we just received quotes to uh, run electrical and plumbing. So the electrical is being done uh, as we speak. And then the plumber's gonna follow the electrician once um, that work is done before we insulate and bu- button up the walls. A lot of work has been done, the whole place has been gutted, new windows have been put in, uh, new doors have been put on the backside, the building's been sided. A lot of structural um, modifications have been made to the building. We still have a lot of work to go. We have to consider, once the plumbing and electrical is in, we have to insulate it, we have to sheet rock it. We have to consider, before we button up the walls, our heating and ventilation needs for the facility. They have to construct the, the kitchen area there. We have flooring that needs to be done, uh, the bathrooms have to be uh, constructed and and finished. With all that being said, I I've, I've gotten a rough estimate from facility maintenance. They're hoping that maybe um, the work can, can be complete by the end of the calendar year, so we still have, still have a ways to go. There were a number of delays that left the, the building um, the construction idle for a while because of the availability of supplies. I know we had to wait like six months for even just for a sliding door for the, for the back, given its size. And when it was delivered, they broke it and we had to reorder it again, so a number of things have caused delays there. But uh, we continue to, to work there and hopefully uh, we can, we can get that project done by the end of the year.
Any questions from the board members?
That's gonna be a nice facility once it's completed for meetings such as this. In other public meetings, it offers another opportunity for televised, televised meetings.
Alright, and moving on to the update on the senior center.
So the senior center, like I said, we're into day fifty one since the, the, that frigid night of, of February fourth. A lot of work has been up, uh, has been done up there. And right now, the, the estimate of cost that was provided to me this morning, we're a hundred sixty five thousand dollars into it already and that number is climbing. But what I could tell you is that um, we're making some significant gains there. Our facility maintenance is, just began working on Saturday to insulate and they, we will be reimbursed from the insurance company for their labor costs. They're insulating and sheet rocking up there and they're putting a knee wall in 'cause they had to remove about two feet of the sheet rock because um, the sheet rock acted as a wick, it was soaking up the water, they had to be cut out and hopefully to prevent any type of mold from, from uh, being a problem. We still have repairs to be made on the flooring tile in the, in the dining room area. We have to, we ordered the rugs, uh, they are on order and hopefully those can be installed after the sheet rock is completed. We have to install a new furnace and we're working with the insurance company on that cost. Some of these costs may not be fully reimbursed. I do have a warrant article on that's gonna appropriate a sum of money from free cash to cover the cost that's not been covered under the insurance policy. New baseboards have to be put in, they have to install all new kitchen cabinets, all the appliances are gonna, have to be removed uh, and new appliances. The office furniture and tables and chairs and everything were moved into pods, those all have to be wiped down. Ter- termination will be made if those, any of those have to be replaced. If they do have to be replaced, it will be covered under the insurance policy. With all that said, we're looking for an opening around June first. So we probably have another two months worth of work. But um, I could say that uh, it, you know, it's, it's moving along. It can never be done as quickly as we want it to be done, but there were certain things holding us back too. Testing has to be done, uh, certain um, supplies are on backwater, but we are, we are making some, some headway there.
So I know we were talking about uh, another facility that people could use, is that taken care of?
So um, thanks to Reverend Knight, I'd like to publicly put that out there, we are renting space from him. We have moved our activities over to the church, our admin offices are over at the church. The preparation of meals are being done at the church and they're, is shipped out. So we're doing the best we can with uh, with um, with, with cooperation from Packer Chalk Church and Reverend Knight. So we are thankful for that. But hopefully, we can stage a, a return to the senior center. Once our offices are done, we can um, occupy them without impacting any work that may be done in the dining room area. So we're hoping maybe that we can get admin back in the building before June first, but certainly that, that remains to be seen.
You had mentioned some items that weren't covered, were they maintenance related items or what makes them not covered? Are they improvements upon?
So I can give you, for instance, the furnace. So the furnace probably was fifteen, twenty years old. There was some wear and tear on the furnace that was not related to the water problem. And their inspections of the dirt work and stuff led them to make a determination that some of that cost is not gonna be covered under the insurance policy. The replacement of the boiler itself, I think is about eleven thousand dollars. So we may have to bridge or gap the amount of a new unit versus the replacement cost, the comfort cost and fund that through a warrant article that go, that's going before town meeting.
Does our, our insurance doesn't cover replacement cost or they're just devaluing it?
No, it covers replacement cost, but they saw evidence of wear and tear that would not qualify under the policy. But no, everything else, they'll cover under replacement cost.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. How do people know what programs are being run out of Packer Chalk? 'Cause I can't find it on the website, I just see the s- senior center is closed. How are people being notified, what programs, I guess, are continuing? Is it just the meal program able to be there or?
So no, there's, there's other activities being run there, whether it be yoga, whatever else. I would have to check with Gene, I think either through my senior center, there is a, a separate um, COA platform that notifies individuals of programs. But I could check to see what's been posted on our, on our own webpage. And if it's not on there, we'll put it on there.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have uh, select board items, we have the uh, establishment of an agricultural committee, possibly seven members to review current bylaws. This goes back to the, the failed bylaw for the, that animal control that Amy Kontois and the board health had worked on. There has been some interest in, in restarting that back up. However, how it went last time, I do feel that, you know, having an agricultural committee to review this and come up with ideas that's made up of a, you know, different cross sections of our community, we may get to a better result than we saw last time. I think everybody would agree that the, the, the bylaws as it stands is rather basic and we do need some more specific, specificity to this bylaw. So that's really uh, the gist of that, I don't know if you guys have any questions, comments on putting together such a committee?
The only question I have, this would be a town manager appointment. It would not be a board of selectmen appointment, and we do have a zoning bylaw committee. So I guess my concern is, why would the zoning bylaw committee not, why would we not refer this to them and ask them for their assistance?
Because, well, certainly, we could bring in members of that, of that committee into this committee, but again, I really was looking for more uh, members of the public, just different cross sections of the, of the public, community here.
I just don't wanna create a two tier system. I'm not opposed to it, I'm just saying, we have a zoning bylaw committee, so appropriately, they should be taking the lead. So perhaps we could ask them, send a, send a communication to them and ask them if they have the bandwidth to, to take this on or if they would support the agricultural, a separate committee. That would be my preference.
But again, I think that bylaw spoke to a lot more than just zoning, it spoke to number of animals within what, within a particular zone, of course, but it, 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 I don't look at this as a, as a zoning issue per se. It is a zoning issue, but I think there's a lot more to it when we talk about, well, can I have snakes? Can I have two snakes? Can I have this amount of reptiles? I mean, this, the whole issue at the town meeting, and I thi- think you would agree, it, it got much deeper than zoning.
Oh, it did, but I also was there when Don Miller did the original and there was a, there was a whole reason why only four animals could be there is because we had people hoarding animals and it wasn't safe for the animals, so I mean, that's, that's, you know, the problem. Personally, for me, I don't have a problem with it, but I would like to ask the zoning bylaw committee first just because they are charged with zoning, this would be a zoning article. And they may say, we have plenty of work here, we would be happy to have somebody step on, but I just wouldn't wanna ignore them, they've been serving for a long time, so that would just be, that would just be my preference.
Awfully ambitious, you're gonna get seven people to volunteer for a committee? That is amazing. Um, I didn't know if you had a specific reason for that number, if you had certain groups that you wanted or you're open to anything, 'cause I, I would hate to say seven members and then we can only get three, that type of stuff, so. Not opposed to it, again, I'm always told that I'm overstepping, so I just wanna make sure we're not overstepping our responsibilities. Like Mr. Carpenter said, like, let's have zoning take this or look at it first and then the bylaw review committee. But I think it's a great idea to solve a problem that we haven't been able to solve yet, so.
It's been a while since that original was, was brought up, so. So it's always good to review these things, 'cause, you know, Don had a bylaw specific to one issue. Judging from what I did hear at town meeting and from, you know, staff, there's more than the issue that he was addressing at that time, once upon a time. So if you're in the mood to entertain a motion, I would just make a motion that we notify uh, the zoning bylaw committee to ask their opinion on this subject and we will table it until we get a response from them and uh, but we feel that it is a very important thing to resolve, so. If they would respond to us as quickly as possible, so that we could request the town manager to. If they would respond to us as quickly as possible so that we could request the town manager to create a committee.
Give a second on the motion? I'll second. Okay, any further discussion?
See, none, do we have, uh so all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? There is a vote.
So that will be to ask the zoning bylaw committee if they'd like to undertake this issue or if they support the agricultural committee.
We have any uh questions, comments, edits on the meeting minutes from February twenty seventh or March thirteenth?
I do, but I do have one little public announcement after that.
Seeing none, so that's them as drafted and Mr. Carpenter?
Um this Monday, April third, speaking of extra meetings, is the volunteer appreciation event, and I hope we can all attend. Um currently, we have twenty four people signed up, but even if you have an RSVP, then you'd like to come where we will have ample food to to feed people. Um but leave leave your backpacks at home, we're not, you know, we're not up to that. But it's starting at six o'clock and we would love to see you, and thank you.
So I, it's your meeting, I know, but we did have someone from the public raise their hand a few times. I didn't know what.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a public meeting. The public meeting, there's a chance for comment, there's a chance to put your name down on the.
That's, it's your meeting and I just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, the those were just updates and it wasn't a chance for the public to um jump in and frankly, candidates to jump in, so um that's the answer to your question. Right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
If all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.